Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome. It's good to see all of you, you youths here with those great sweatshirts. It looks great. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Study Session Agenda for this Monday, November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. It is the Thanksgiving holiday week coming up, so we're pleased to have all of you here with us tonight and those of you watching from home. So we have three items for discussion tonight. The first is our Joint Youth Council meeting with all of us. So to the extent you can sit around and grab some microphones, Chase, go ahead and bring up as many of you as you can or squeeze around as best you can and tell us a little bit about what's going on. And if you, if you want, why don't we start and have you introduce everybody? I know we've met many of you and all of you are not necessarily new, but it's always good to introduce and get your names for our record here. And other council members may learn who they don't know or haven't met.
There we go. All right. Good evening, Mayor Wayland, Deputy Mayor Moss, and council members and community members. My name is Chase Washington. I'm the Chair of our current Youth Council. Next to me is our Co-Chair Violet Johnson. Then we have our Communications Manager, Renita. Then we have our Secretaries Alexandra Corona Hernandez and our other Elijah Stiana. And thank you for giving us this opportunity to come and present here today. We want to share our recent accomplishments and the ongoing efforts and future goals that we have for this year. Over the past few months, we've worked diligently to evaluate our youth voices and the community. And we're proud to update you on these initiatives that we've been working on, which include monthly updates to the City Council, you guys, on our youth initiatives and perspectives. Then we've been volunteering at our city and community events to foster strong connections for residents of all ages. We provided input on the city advisory boards and committees and long-term plans to ensure that our decisions reflect the diverse needs of our community. And then finally, we want to host youth eccentric events such as our Youth Summit. We believe that these efforts strengthen our community and encourage more young people to engage in civic leadership, which is crucial. While we're passionate about making a difference in Lakewood and we are proud of our hard and dedicated work, we recognize our efforts require your support and backing, and we invite you for your continued support in a few different ways. First way is providing opportunities for the youth to input key city projects, encouraging broader youth participation by promoting Youth Council and partnering with us on events and initiatives that highlight youth creativity and leadership in our community. And now I'll turn it over to our Co-Chair Violet Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Violet Johnson, a senior at Harrison Prep and, as Chase said, your Vice Chair for the Youth Council. One of our top priorities this year is contributing to the city's Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Grant Five-Year Consolidated Plan. The youth, we bring a unique perspective on issues like affordable housing, accessibility, and community resources. We're excited to collaborate with city leaders to ensure these programs meet the long-term needs of our community. To raise awareness about the Youth Council's mission, we're also hosting the Youth Empowerment Summit. This event will focus on leadership training, skill building, and amplifying youth voice. Additionally, we partnered with the Arts Commission and the Nisqually Tribe on community art initiatives that celebrate local community and creativity. These projects aim to build pride and foster connection among our Lakewood residents. And now I will turn it over to Renita to discuss our plans to directly support local youth.
Can you hear me? Yes. Hi, my name is Renita. I'm a junior at Clover HP, Harrison Prep, sorry. And I am the Communications Manager for Youth Council. We are thrilled to work with the city staff once again to nominate a candidate for the Association of Washington City Scholarship, which honors outsideing youth leaders in Lakewood. We're also, we're also collaborating with city staff to shape summer programming for Youth Academy. Our goal is to create engaging impactful programs where youth can develop life skills, build community connections, and grow as leaders. I will now pass on the presentation to Elijah and Alexandra to highlight our accomplishments and work schedule in the new calendar year.
Good evening. My name is Elijah Stana, a junior at Clover Park High School and co-Secretary of the Youth Council. We've had a busy and productive year so far with much more planned ahead. Here's a snapshot of our timeline. In August, we hosted our annual Youth Council kickoff event, including team-building activities with city council members. In September, we delivered the first of our monthly Youth Council report to the City Council. We elected officers and assigned liaisons to city boards and committees, and we partnered with Mothers Against Drunk Driving for a youth-focused discussion on the harms of driving while under the influence of drugs and alcohol. In October, we participated in a city media guidelines discussion with Derek Gibson, continued planning the Youth Empowerment Summit, including venue selection and brainstorming keynote speakers and topics, and volunteered at the Truck and Tractor Day event. In November, we finalized the Youth Empowerment Summit breakout session topics and discussed ways for participants to have fun while learning easy ways to de-stress. Now I'll turn it over to Alexandra for a look ahead and conclusion to our presentation.
Good evening. My name is Alexandra Corona Hernandez, and I'm a senior at Harrison Prep High School this year. I serve as a co-Secretary for the Youth Council as well. In December, we'll collaborate with the city housing staff to provide youth input on the CDBG Home Five-Year Consolidated Plan. We'll nominate a candidate for the All Washington City Scholarship and will volunteer at the Christmas Parade of Lights and continue planning the Youth Empowerment Summit. January through April, we'll work hard to finalize plans for the Youth Empowerment Summit and organize a second youth-focused event. In May, we'll review our accomplishments for the year and establish goals for twenty twenty five to twenty six. And finally, we look forward to being formally recognized in June by the City Council for our contributions to the community. Thank you for the continued support of the Youth Council. We're honored to be part of, part of a city that values its young people, and we look forward to working with you to build a higher future for Lakewood. We're happy to answer any questions or provide additional details about our initiatives.
Pretty good. Thank you. I'll open it up to questions before I ask them, Councilmember Bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, you guys. Great job, great presentation. I was wondering if you could repeat the three key initiatives that you talked about at the beginning. You said input on key city projects. I heard partnering on events, but I missed one thing.
Yeah, and then encouraging broader youth participation by promoting the Youth Council. That was the second, that was the third one.
Okay. And so I just wanted you guys to just talk about those three points a little bit more and maybe expound on them. Just let me know a little bit more detail, I guess.
Well, I can give input for encouraging broader youth participation or promoting the Youth Council because Elijah and I are actually a part of a videography committee that we recently put together for the Youth Council, and we're going to be focusing on making key video, video projects throughout the year. We're hoping to make four, three for the big events like the Christmas Parade, and then the main one will be our Youth Summit one. And it's just a way to really put Lakewood Youth Council out there and like really advertise it and really get our point across so that we can hopefully get more youth interests and youth advocacy out of that one. And then I will change it over to anyone who would like to comment on the other two.
Mr. Brandster has a follow-up for him.
If I could just labor that point. And the City Council did do a write-up in the, in the Connections Magazine early fall, I think, just to be able to go and do that, that. Did you think that that was effective, impactful, or is that the right way to go about what your goal is?
I think, I actually did see that when I was like looking up things for Lakewood Youth Council. I saw that, that like, it was like a newspaper or like a magazine. I think that with people of our age specifically and more youth, we're really like social media oriented. And especially with the way that a lot of us are really honed in with our brains, we like fast-paced things. So the reason why Elijah and I were thinking of making videos is because we're thinking of making like skits or like fast-paced content to really get our point across. Because that's just the content that really displays to youth right now.
Yeah. So you are, you are here this evening with your cast of thousands. And this is the largest group we've had to form a Youth Council in the history of having a Youth Council, to be able to go and do that. But in terms of growing the Youth Council, we have never put a number on how many Youth Council members there are, but is there a point where too many becomes difficult to manage? I know that last year, the Council, which was smaller than this one somewhat, divided itself up into groups that looked at different things. And that this year, the decision was made to look at things as a group of the whole. So is that size and that, and that organization having more and everybody doing everything, and that's maybe not the right thing to say, but working better than a year ago?
I think that everyone that we've selected that's currently in the Youth Council, we're all from different areas. Like, for example, different high schools, different organizations, like the SYAC or like AWSL. And I think that all of our input is really crucial, but I think that in terms of making the Youth Council bigger, I think it's best to keep it more towards honing in people that can help contribute to the Youth Council and then helping make connections with other youth ran organizations to do collaborations and then hopefully do bigger youth projects within Lakewood.
So how far along in strategizing to recruit targeted skills are you?
Um. Yes. Um, so far for like our strategizing, it's kind of what Violet was saying. We do have like these social media skits in place that's really targeting our teenagers to try and get them to understand like what's going on. And I know earlier I've worked with Bryn and Derek to get our picture in the magazines that are being sent out like monthly. That's to try and target the parents. Like if we, if we introduce the parents to what we are and what we do, that allows the teens to come and join us and get a feel for what it, what we do. And then as far as like, is the group too big or too small? If the group is really big, it only becomes too much if we don't have people contributing. If they don't contribute, then that's too big and it's too many. But if we have everyone contributing, it's like, it's perfect. It's good.
And, and so of those two ifs, what's your evaluation of now?
Now, um, like now is like our broadcasting of people joining. Is that what you're asking?
Okay.
I just add on to that. As of now, so we recruited about, I would say forty, a little more than forty members at the beginning of this year. And what we decided to do is that, last year we noticed some members kind of, I think, kind of stopped attending at near the end of the year. So what we decided to do this year is like, hey, if you want to be in Youth Council, you have to recognize that this is a commitment and you need to be dedicated to this council if you're being a part of this. It isn't just for a resume, it isn't just for a title. If you're on the council, you'd be committing and supporting and working for our initiatives and projects. So what we did this year is that we decided to say like, hey, if you miss three different meetings unexcused, then you might be asked to leave the council. And you can make up those missed opportunities by communicating with us and attending different volunteer events. And really just about having good communication and showing that you really care about the council. But if we recognize that a student isn't fully dedicated or isn't showing up or isn't communicating, then we might decide to tell them to leave the council. So well, that's how we've kind of had a bit of quality control throughout this year. That's kind of how we tackle that. Does that answer your question?
How about working on a TikTok video with, with that? We can do TikTok.
We could do a reel.
Yes.
Make it look like.
Mr. Boki.
Yeah.
I know. Nationally, it's probably not an appropriate forum, but.
A reel, a reel.
A reel would be good.
Yeah.
I actually would like to say we would love your guys' participation and collaboration in a skit or video. We would love that. Yes, we will send out emails asking if you guys would like to participate.
It'd be fun if you guys put it together. I'd be happy to show up. Mr. Boki, Mr. Boki's raised his hand at least once or twice. He has skipped. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate being called on. I want to hear a little bit more about your involvement with our Human Services folks on CDBG. And who's, who's going to those meetings? Have you started that process and, and what are you thinking about?
Hi, Shannon Bennett, Human Services Coordinator. We had scheduled to do a, a kind of a feedback session I was going to present to them. I've already presented to them what the funds can be used for as far as the card categories. We were going to have a discussion on, at November twenty first meeting, but due to a lack of attendance, a lot of, there was a competing school event. We canceled that meeting. So on December second, what we're going to do is we are going to, I have a survey from our consultants that are helping us with the five-year consolidated plan. And so what we'll do is it will take that survey, but also I will be sitting down with the students at our December second meeting to find out from them verbally what their feedback is on the, the con plan and how those funds can be spent.
Then I have a question. You mentioned housing, and this is, I'm going to get a little off topic because I know we're here to talk about their plan, but there was a mention about housing that. And so without, you know, you don't have, you don't have to become personal about it if you've been involved, but have any of you known people who have been, whose family has been challenged in the housing area? A lot of euphemisms. In other words, they couldn't afford the rent. They had to either look for assistance to pay the rent or they had to leave their current conditions because of rent increases. And can you, and if you could elaborate at all, it would be really helpful.
Actually, both my grandma and my mom had to leave the Lakewood residency recently. My grandma, she lived like through Gravely Lake for a large part of her life. And then she actually had to leave and move to Portland because she could just no longer afford the upkeep. And that happened to her. And then my mom also had to move because the rent was in the like two thousands. And she had to unfortunately leave that residency and find a different location because the rent is just extremely high and sometimes depending on a job that someone has, they can't accommodate unless they get a new job or another job.
And did your mom have to leave the area also, or is she?
She works in the area, but I think she's still trying to find housing.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else other than Mr. Brandster's starring role in the next video? For you? He looks shocked now, but wait, wait till he gets his dance and moves out and he'll be fine. Mr. LaRusso.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to all of Youth Council for, for coming out tonight and for everything that you do. I really appreciate your participation in all of our advisory committees and providing that youth perspective that we definitely need because you are the future of Lakewood and we really understand that as a council. And we, we depend on you to, to really show what's important to folks here so that we can be successful as a community. I also appreciate that you're made up not just of seniors and there are folks who will be returning on a regular basis. So you can transfer that knowledge down generation to generation as you, as you come up. And I'm curious, is there a strategy to have sort of a capstone project on an annual basis that you guys work on to deliver? Or is it more of a support in a bunch of individual areas? And would you want to change that going forward or would you want to keep it the way it is? Does that make sense?
Hi, my name is Elijah. For the Lakewood Youth Council as a whole, I would say our capstone project itself would be the Youth Summit. But as far as these individual little areas you were talking about, all of us are selected to these selective committees that each contribute to a different thing in the community. Like, for example, I'm in the Lakewood's Promise and she's with Parks and Rec. All of us are developing input in these smaller committees to hopefully transform the community. And we're hoping that with our input as a Lakewood Youth Council, we'll be able to help put in that, that youth voice that, for the community.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, by doing that, all the individual pieces make a huge impact on the community. So I appreciate that. So thank you.
Chase, does every member of the Youth Council have a seat at one of the advisory boards and commissions? So everyone's got an opportunity to serve on one of those? I see heads are not good. Has it been interesting?
I see heads nod good. Has it been interesting? Sometimes, has been, alright. Yeah, must be on the uh Elhab Board or something, yeah, like the History Advisory Board. Yeah. Um, okay, what I wanted to kind of know or just dig in a little bit, as Councilmember Bell indicated, the types of other input that you think would be engaging and interesting for youth to have with city projects. And then, you know, what direction would you give us to help you or or provide more broader participation and engagement? Any other things that we could do better for you to be part of your your civic lives? I mean, doesn't have to just be put on you, Chase. If anyone has some thoughts there, yeah.
Uh okay, um I know a common theme this year within the youth has been wanting to know more about like career insight questions. And I think a very helpful way for city councils as well to be more involved would be like kind of um giving us more information as well as to like how you each got to your own roles and like how you made those personal decisions as well, just to like let this, let the um youth know that that's always like a path that you can take or you can take this way or that way. Especially as there's a lot of seniors this year who are unsure of what they want to go into, like post-graduation. So I think that would could be like a main point this year as well.
That would be, yeah, 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 politicians will love to talk. Uh but that's something we can set up. I know we, years ago, we went to some museum, we had a social dinner thing beforehand. And we went to, gosh, I don't even remember that, we went to a museum, remember that? Went to some museum together and then we, it was a, you guys weren't around. It was with the youth council. It was really a fun event where we had dinner together, it was either a catered thing and then we went and then we came back and had kind of focused group table conversations around Robin about the central theme of the of the museum display. And I think it was, I think it was Martin Luther King related, I think. Something like that, though. But we could certainly, Shannon, we could do something like that, like an informal pizza thing and then do table. Uh what do you, what do you call it, speed dating, if you will, rotate around and have longer tables where we could go around and talk about, you know, our various paths, whether through education to our jobs or careers and, you know, what we may have done differently. What we, you know, like about what we do for a living, what we don't like, what you might consider, how, you know, the path that we each took to get there. That, if that's a value to you, we can make that happen. Yeah, if that would be of interest.
So we will be doing something really similar to that, actually. We will be um inviting you guys to our youth summit again. And we'll be doing like the um kind of like you guys rotate to each table to get to like know you guys a little bit better. Um we do have your guys' roles, we will be sending those out.
Yeah.
Soon, I think, I believe.
Well, I think the feedback we provided last time, good exercise, but we needed more time at the tables. It was awfully rushed, right? And we didn't get a chance to really interact as well as we could have. Any other thoughts on that? Cause I like that idea. I mean, part of the opportunity to have you on board is not only to get youth voice, student voice on all these important aspects of civic life here in Lakewood, but to to get to know one another and for you to get some mentoring, uh to the extent we can do that and limited time we have together. But we'd love to do more of it. So let us know on that. How many seniors do we have here? Quite a few. Okay. The Common App, how many have got that done before Thanksgiving? Uh nice, nice, nice. How many uh how many colleges are you applying to roughly? Is it two, three, seventeen? Good, 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 good. I have to ask, any Gonzaga? Alright, leave, just leave, just leave. Well, that's good. Yeah, it's exciting. And so getting a dummy for Thanksgiving is kind of a, you know, off your off your uh task list. So the more you can get that done, the better your parents will be in terms of happy uh and thankful for Thanksgiving. Yeah, exactly. Any other questions? Those kinds of things are really fun. Do you do you find that the um Yeah, I'll get you in a sec. Do you find that the counseling uh provided at school is helpful in navigating that path? A little bit? Not so much. Yeah, interesting. I've heard that a little bit. Okay, go ahead. You had a question?
And um we had one follow-up question.
Yeah.
Um do you guys have any more, in the city, do you guys have any more youth sponsored events that we could participate in as a youth council?
Youth sponsored events? So other than like the uh the big summit you're doing?
Yeah.
It's really kind of on you. If you want to do it, we would support it. So if you wanted to do a fall event, you could. I think you guys do uh the big opener when you you kind of start the year, you have that out of the pavilion and then you do a little pizza thing out there and some get to know one another exercises. You could certainly do another event if you wanted to do something more engaging in the fall. And uh you know, you could do something as simple as we could get coordinate seats at a Lakewood Playhouse event, for example. Where you could go and watch a play together and then maybe afterwards you could talk about the play or something simple like that. Where you can do things together that would be fun, but engaging because they're involving a Lakewood activity. Same with Lakewood um Lakewood Gardens. I know they're doing kind of a mini Zoo Light thing this year. And so that might be an opportunity for them to go out and actually uh be part of that, whether greeting people as they come in, have a chance to walk around, you know, chaperones a little bit for people. There's a lot of elderly people that'll be out there. Uh so that would be another opportunity to engage. It's kind of fun. Yeah, Councilmember Bell and then.
Thank you, Mayor. Um there's other things like, you know how we do the community cleanup, things like that? Those are really easy ways for you guys to participate, sign up help and do, you know, you're interacting with the residents here. So I think that's good. Um that's, so that's something that's already established, if that's what you're looking for. But I think there's a lot of like those type events that that could happen, I would assume. Um I wanted to elaborate on that. That request is um for my youth council, yes. But I know our youth are asking for more regularly planned events for them and their colleagues who are not maybe involved in leadership roles. Um to come together, have things to look forward to in equitable parts of the city. So I think um when you ask us how you can support not only our youth council, but our youth in general, then um that's absolutely something um that we are looking for and would love to work with the city on.
You know, one of the, one of the things, I'll let Deputy Mayor speak just a sec here. That we are, as a matter of council priority, trying to plan for a multi-generational community facility, right? And that means teens as well as older adults in different programming. It would be kind of a neat exercise to maybe do a whiteboard thing together where we talk to you guys about what do you think is missing for your age group? What is missing for teens to do in terms of places to go, activities to be engaged in, that kind of thing? So we can get all that kind of up on the board, so to speak, before you leave your term this year and really get that feedback. That would be helpful to me. I don't know about you guys. Deputy Mayor, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um if you guys want more volunteer time, uh Clover Park Technical College is having a scholarship dinner. And if you were interested, I can put you, I can get Shannon the information to put you in contact with her. And then the Lakewood Multicultural Coalition, some of you might have been there last year. We're gonna have that again in March, so we will call on you. So be careful what you ask for. No, we appreciate you guys. And I just wanted to say to the ones that are just sitting in the audience listening, this is a good education for you as well. You learn, you can watch your peers in action. It's help, it's very helpful. So don't think because you're not in upfront that you, it doesn't matter. It does. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to add on to the, what you were saying about the, like a sit down together, maybe like a whiteboard or a brainstorm with the uh ideas for like events in our community. I think that's really great because like even like throughout my years in like high school, I go hang out with my friends and like, oh, what do you guys want to do? It's always either the movies or the bowling alley or maybe Barnes and Noble. But there's not many like places for youth, I guess, to get together in the community. Um so I think maybe working on making new spaces where that would be great because it key, it makes people come together. That kind of boosts um the engagement and it kind of keeps people in the right places, if that makes sense, you know? Staying safe, staying happy, um having a good time in Lakewood. Instead of having to like go out outside of Lakewood and maybe Tacoma or having to drive other places. I know that we recently built the um the new business there, the trampoline place. That's a good addition. So there's places like that. Um little simple places that really add to our community and kind of help us have those spaces to have fun and to enjoy our time together, yeah.
No, absolutely. Most of us probably remember growing up where there was a roller skating rink nearby. Or an ice skating rink, you know, in the wintertime. And we've often thought it would be nice to bring in one of those uh temporary ice skating rinks and stick it over somewhere, you know, so you could have it for the holiday season. Um maybe something we think about in the next future year or two. But it's important because Lakewood doesn't have that stuff and we need to do and a bigger thinking. I got a picture from Councilmember Pearson who's not here tonight, but he was visiting his parents back in Arizona. And he sent some pictures to me of a um vacant Sears store. And what they had done inside the Sears store is they made like pickleball courts and mini golf and mini bowling. And then they had a cafeteria and a coffee shop or something like that. So it was undercover, which is critical for this area, especially weather like this. But it was filled with kids and people and they were engaged, all sorts of stuff. And basically what was an empty storefront. Well, we got a few of those too. It it takes a little bit of coordination uh and certainly some resources, but just getting the ideas of what would be helpful, what would be fun, what would be desired. You know, that that is good information for us to have. So and then Councilmember Bell will promise to make sure it happens. So, yeah, she'll promise. Yeah, yeah, thank you, Benny. Bring bring some of that Kent money down. Anything else for the good of the order? We appreciate your coming tonight. This is helpful. It's great to see you all. And and you got just a couple more days until you eat your, eat to your heart's content, it looks like. So it'll be good.
One and a half, right?
Yeah. Anything else, Chase, for the good of the order? That was good stuff.
I think we're all good. Are we all? Alright, thank you for having us.
Thank you very much. Thanks again.
Thank you too. Good night.
See ya.
It's such a fantastic job.
Oh, there, they, it gets better there every year, every year.
Okay, well, next we've got the review of the locally initiated amendments to the two thousand nineteen shoreline master program. And for this, we have our planning manager, Ms. Tiffany Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Five, I believe, for our packet.
Correct. So this, I do not have any sort of PowerPoint this evening, so if you refer in your manual or manual, your uh meeting materials, starting on page five, you'll you'll see just a one-page memo and then there's a summary of the changes being suggested within what becomes then, starting on page uh twelve, a new version of the existing shoreline master program. So there, it's actually a very small change tech, number of text characters wise. Uh but you have a large piece of it as part of your memo this evening. So uh hearken back to several weeks ago, almost two months ago now, actually. Uh you took action on the two thousand twenty four comprehensive plan periodic review and the development regulations related. And within that, there were changes made at that point to the critical areas ordinance specifically related to what water bodies were getting governed under either the shoreline master program or that other code, the critical areas ordinance. And then also um looking at buffer widths on certain water bodies. This is now the other side to that coin. You've completed the work on the critical areas ordinance update. This is now taking the existing shoreline master program and editing it to be consistent with the action the council already took in September. So if you were to take a look on page um six and seven and eight, that's really where you see the bulk of the amendments. Essentially, what they're doing is saying ordinance eight thirteen, which is what the council did again on September sixteenth to adopt the new critical areas ordinance is acknowledged. Uh and then you'll see a couple of changes in blue uh underlined text on pages seven and eight. And those are reflecting the changes that were already made in the critical areas ordinance. We're just bringing it over into this separate document. So there was already a process handled jointly by the Department of Ecology and the City. And there was a public joint, uh sorry, a joint public hearing at the planning commission level. So with the process, that's slightly different because this is a uh a SEPA shoreline master or shoreline management act document. It doesn't go through a public hearing at the city council level. That joint hearing was all that needed to occur. What you also have in here toward the back of uh the packet related to this, so beginning on page hundred and forty-four, you'll see public comments that were submitted during the public hearing. Long story short, it was the Department of Natural Res- or yeah, Natural Resources uh that submitted one comment letter and it was saying they had no suggested changes. Uh they did provide suggestions for the next time a regular full review of this program and this document happens, but that won't be until two thousand twenty-nine. And so other than that, I'm happy to answer questions. But uh assuming nothing changes between now and a week from now, you would be taking action to just finalize the changes in the two thousand twenty-four shoreline master program based on what happened already with the critical areas ordinance. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
So, so any other than what we've seen, any material changes that we haven't discussed or that need to be kind of emphasized for us? Any other material changes?
I don't think so. What you would see, uh really the crux of it is on page eight, where you see the section about wetlands buffers crossed out. That language has been pulled and has dropped into the critical areas ordinance. Because if it's not a shoreline of the state, it is no longer governed by the shoreline master program anymore. It's now under the city's critical areas ordinance. And so there's wetland buffers that are now in the critical areas ordinance, which is title fourteen of the municipal code, and they're no longer included in the SMP.
Okay. Any questions of a spear?
Pretty straightforward, right?
Yeah. Although Mr. Foley had a good comment about what, why don't we give rid of some of the stumps? I would ask the same thing.
I can pass that along to facilities and parks and see what they can do.
Well, hopefully, I mean, in all seriousness, hopefully when we work on the Edgewater Master Plan and we redo the park, they'll look at some of those that are right by the proposed boat launch area that they're gonna do.
Yeah, I think that's what he was concerned with.
It is a problem, yeah. Okay, very good. We'll see no other comments. We'll move on to the review of the ordinance related to the endangerment with a controlled substance. And for this, we have our city attorney, Ms. Walker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. I'm Heidi Walker with um your city attorney. And what we've provided for you, it's um something to understand in two parts. One is that we were asked by the county to adopt this ordinance to create consistency throughout the county in all of the jurisdictions. And so what we've presented to you is exactly the ordinance that has been asked of all the other cities. The second part of it is the substance of it. What does it actually do? And as you can see in the ordinance, it states that if there is evidence that a child has ingested, absorbed, contacted, um contraband or um sub-controlled substances, not to include marijuana or cannabis rather, then there would be grounds for citation for a misdemeanor. And the reason that the county would have to ask us to do that, they have concurrent jurisdiction, but cities have generally taken the field of misdemeanors to within their own jurisdictions. And so they can't be sure that the cities will enforce this if we have. they can't be sure that the cities will enforce this if we haven't adopted the ordinance. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you may have.
This one came at the behest of the prosecutor, I believe, Ms. Robinette.
Correct. Mary Robinette approached cities throughout the county and, as I said, her concern is that she knows that she can get something passed throughout the county in the unincorporated areas. But that in a county like Pierce that's so urbanized, that really doesn't accomplish what she's trying to accomplish. She would like to be able to say this is the law throughout the county and everyone's together on this particular law.
Mr. Bokey.
Thank you. So you're creating, this is a whole new, Exhibit A is a whole new chapter, nine point one six, is that? Full clock? That's not amending any chapter? We're creating a new chapter?
Correct. Councilmember Bokey, we have not had anything specific to this issue of um underage people contacting um controlled substances. And so this is its own chapter that would stand alone.
So tell me what this looks like, and I'm kind of a little bit amazed that there's no law currently. I guess a child comes into an emergency room having ingested what is later determined is an illicit drug. Is that, is that how these cases start?
That, that would be the most likely way that this would end up being prosecuted. And it's a crime for the responsible adult, the person who's caring for the child. It's, it's probably not a complete apples-to-apples comparison, but you may know in the news, we're always hearing about ways to keep children away from guns, for example, and then people get up in arms. Bad, bad pun. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I know you like your puns, but um uh, people get upset when they find out that children have been able to get access to guns. So now we have all these campaigns about that. This is a law that's trying to separate kids from the controlled substances. Obviously, there would also be some version of enforcement for the adults, but I think it's in part in reaction to the fact that legislative bodies are increasingly willing to accommodate adults who engage in drug behavior. And they're realizing that especially for small children, it can be um really, yeah, really dangerous. And so that would be how they would do this. But yes, you're right, that where you see the the required contact or absorption or ingestion is you're going to see it when they're rushed to the hospital or something like that. I don't think we're talking about a situation where the police arrive on the scene and they wait for the child to touch the drugs. Then they arrest somebody. It's not going to be like that.
There, there. Okay, yeah, that could. So this is gonna come up somehow in a potential felony arrest where they go in, the adult's doing something stupid with a controlled substance that they shouldn't be doing, right? Or possessing it or intending to distribute it and they're leaving it where it shouldn't be left. And that's recklessly permitting the child to have access to the right to ingest, inhale, absorb, have contact with it.
Right. It's, it's going to be more likely um something that we can prosecute when we see the evidence that the child has either touched it or um ingested it or whatever. So as an example, if, as you're describing sort of a drug den situation, which they exist, if there's a child there that has powder on their hands, right, standing in the middle of all of this, that would be in, from my perspective as a prosecutor, that would be enough to establish contact. But you're right, we have to prove the case. At the end of the day, we would have to prove.
Yeah. And so the reason why the prosecutor's asking for this to be at the city's sort of misdemeanor level is because they can't make enough stick at the felony level. Is that what's going on?
No idea why she's asking that it be at the misdemeanor level. It's, it's all, we have the authority to pass those, so.
Right, yeah, interesting. Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. You know, uh, thinking back to the prosecutor's original email to us some time ago suggesting this is doing that, and she did indicate that um she and others are making an effort to get the state legislature to pass a felony statute, which is essentially the same piece to do that. I guess that I'm disappointed in your explanation that uh we don't look at endangerment and 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 adversity to kind of in the same way that we do with guns or domestic violence. First, we have a statute in domestic violence similar to this, but it has to do with having instances of domestic violence just in the presence of children. And you're saying that this would not condone illegal drug use in the presence of a child. You, you, the, the child has to somehow absorb or inhale or 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 do that and 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 at the definition of contact, I guess you, you're saying that that's so narrowly defined that it has to be touch?
Um, Councilmember Branstadter, at the risk of disappointing you further, my answer is it depends. Um the have contact part does require actual contact, standard dictionary definition. Statutory construction would have you look at the dictionary and that's where you'd go. But inhale, if you're in a smoke-filled room, if the police come in and everybody's sitting around smoking drugs and the child is there, I again, from my perspective as a prosecutor, I think it's reasonable to assume that the child has inhaled the dangerous drug at that point. It's gonna be prosecutorial discretion every time.
I, I, I guess that, you know, when I think of contact, you know, uh, you know, I, I, I don't necessarily think of it as exclusively as, as, as touch. But I think like if I'm have contact with Councilmember Laura Sella, I'm having contact with him, him now, okay?
Yeah, that's.
To be able to go and do that. It's, it's, it's be, being present in the same, same location and 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 I think about the, the we're, we're sort of setting ourselves up to where we're going to be very reactive rather than proactive, because we're gonna wait until we got something bad has happened with the child to, to do that. They're, they're, they're at an emergency room for doing that. And it, which, which sort of takes out of it if that you have someone who has such substances in their home, in their home, but doesn't uh
Could you say?
Secure them in a way that, 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 that inquisitive children can't find, and and because in the whereas is it talks about one of the most significant elements of that is sometimes accidental, okay? In other words, experimental piece to, to be able to go and do that. And you know, you know, so in, in, and the attorney related to, to like firearms, we really expect people who own firearms and also have children to keep them locked up to be able to go and do that. And I, I really would prefer to have if that kind of negligent contact that creates the circumstance of where accidental contact can occur.
We're, we're on to something entirely different than what's been presented at this point. Um, for one thing, contact has the definition of actual contact. The contact in the state that you're using it, this kind of contact would never apply in a drug situation like ever. Um, so I think there's a problem there from the get-go. The second issue is if we're talking about a situation where we're wanting to tinker with this, you don't have any request from your police department to do this. What you have is a request from the county prosecutor to have a consistent law throughout the county. And so if we're going to vary from that, we really ought to be talking to her about that. And the third thing is, in the instance where you talk about accidental something with the drugs, they're either accidentally ingesting it, accidentally inhaling it, or accidentally contacting it. You would be in violation of our law at that point if an adult let that happen. The accidental part doesn't matter.
Yeah, but that, that means that the ordinance is not proactively prevented.
How so?
Well, it's, 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 in, in, in other words, it only becomes effective once something bad happens and it doesn't prevent creating an environment where such a thing can happen.
Let me ask you a question then, real quick.
But, but I, I guess I do understand that it's kind, it's, it's kind of like a, a, an ILA, okay? The, the prosecutor wants all the cities to adopt exactly sort of the same thing to provide uniformity and enforcement across the county at the gross misdemeanor level until such time as some action is taken at the state level. Is that essentially where we're?
That, that is, when I opened my comments tonight, I said there were two lanes. That is one of the two lanes. The other lane is the question of whether the substance matches what you would want to do. And one of the things I would encourage you to do, if you want to go down the road of proactively preventing people from having their children come in contact with drugs, that would require some great deal of proactivity on the part of your police department. And I think you really have to start looking at your resource allocation before you issue something like that, because in that instance, you've created an ordinance that has much less to do with the parental involvement and much more to do with our ability to get in there and catch them exposing their children to the drugs.
Well, I, I, I understand. And, and I would just venture to say that this is one of those things that just in, in my view, if there is a way to actually structure something, and maybe it's not this ordinance, but a future ordinance that we look at a, 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 around doing it, is to do it, it's similarly what we did with the, in the, in the domestic violence situation of to come up with some way to, to do that. And if that is a chore or the the police department, it may be one worth asking them to do, given that we're talking about particularly y- young children who are most often the ones that are the victims of this, of these accidental in, 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 ingestions. Um, I, I'm certainly gonna support the ordinance that's here. Um, because I want to be supportive of the prosecutor and understanding in, 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 in her intent. But I really would like to look at is there, is there a step more in the preventive manner that going forward we could take as a, as, as a city to be able to, to go for in doing it?
Well, let me ask the question I was trying to get out. If we were looking, if I hear you correctly, Mr. Branstadter, to try to change this, assuming the prosecutor was okay with that, if we're making something that's non-uniform across the county, we're trying to do something akin to what we did with exposure to domestic violence, could you perhaps see in paragraph A there under nine sixteen twenty where it reads, you know, a person's guilty of the crime of endangerment with a controlled substance if a person knowingly or recklessly permits a child or dependent person to ingest, inhale, absorb, or have contact with? Could you add or be in the presence of a controlled substance other than cannabis? Contact with would be the ingestion, touch, or in the presence of. So if mom and dad are doing drugs in the house, kid isn't necessarily in contact tactile with the drugs, but is exposed to it. Yeah, maybe it is. That's what I'm asking.
I, I do think it's two different crimes and I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. They like to talk over one another. So go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I do think they're two different crimes. And I think for the most part, not a super experienced drug doer of any sort, as you can imagine, I'm a little bit of a teetotaler that way, but um I would imagine that most drugs involve some sort of odor, aroma. I mean, I guess there are some that don't involve any of that, but I don't know how a child would be present while the adults are doing drugs. It's not like alcohol where it's in a glass sitting off to the side. So um, I think there are many instances where a child's mere presence would be satisfied just by the inhalation piece. Um, I could certainly talk to some of the other cities and see what they're doing with it, but I do think those are different crimes.
No, that's why one day.
Present where drugs are being done would be the crime. And then the question would be when are the officers in a position to see
Right.
the people doing the drugs and the child being present?
Because they have to have probable cause to get in the house anyway. Right, okay. Mr. Branstadter, quickly.
Yeah, a- and, and, and I would just say that, that the issues that we're talking about children and their curiosity. I mean, if you talk about uh fentanyl.
Haven't heard.
Fentanyl doesn't smell or anything. It looks like a skittle. If it's sitting, if there's a bunch of them sitting on a table, you know, you know, it's, it's not, it doesn't fit all of those other things about absorption and, and then things to be doing it. And then, and then you have the behavior of, of, of parents or guests or, or, or others who are in the house that are the, that are taking them. It, 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 it's, it's sort of legitimizing that that, that behavior and, 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 and so, so i- if, if you're an adult, and I understand there's a reluctance that we're gonna be able to prosecute someone for having you know, limited amounts of certain kinds of drugs, but there's a difference between having them and keeping them secured or, or, or out of the reach of, in that, of, of, of children, just like you have to do with your prescription medications. Prescription medications, you're constantly gonna keep them away from that, out of the reach of children to be able to go and do that. You know, I, I would certainly if there's some small things such as the mayor suggested could be added in here to be able to go, go in, 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 and do that. And then it was publicized that that's the expectation in the community, that if, that adults are not going to keep a barrier, have to keep a barrier between that children would be helpful.
So it looks like it's a no harm, no foul to try to do something consistent with what the prosecutor's asking other cities and towns to do. It'd just be interesting to see if it's amenable to broadening.
Well, if, if we go down that road, one of the questions we start getting into are how are you constitutionally in a position to see the drugs in the first place?
Right.
So you might get somebody, when you pull them over for a traffic stop and you see the fentanyl in the center console, if the child's in a car seat in the backseat, is that sufficiently dangerous? I mean, we are going down a certain road here. And I do think, to your point, Councilmember Branstadter, when Mary Robinette first wrote to us, she said the point is to get this to the state legislature. If, if we chase down some of what we're talking about now, it's sort of the analysis paralysis, right? We start having conversations about the constitutional intrusions that get you to the position to see some of those things. Whereas getting something passed countywide, I think is her objective so that she can get there in time for the legislature. I'd be happy to try and make a phone call to her. I suspect if every one of the nineteen cities in, in, in Pierce County did that, we're not gonna be there in time for the legislature. So it really does depend, as I said in the beginning, there are two tracks. One track is what the county prosecutor's trying to do. The other track is what we would actually want to support substantively.
Yeah. We could pass this and always see how it goes and then tweak it down the road.
And we could, if the council chooses, it's entirely the council's discretion about whether or not to adopt it. That doesn't stop us from reaching out to Mary Robinette and saying, hey, here were some of the concerns that our council has. They're more concerned than just what can we show the legislature? They're concerned with what's actually happening to children in these situations. And so we're interested in reaching out further for that. But that all is council discretion.
Absolutely. And we, it sounds like don't have any anecdotal information from our own police force as to whether or not this has been a chronic issue.
Um, I don't, based on my conversations, and I've had a few of them because I was covering a lot of court over the summer, um, and when we charge our program um, that we have through the budget, it's law base. budget, it's law base, you automatically send an email to the, to the arresting officers, and so they know what you decided to do with the case. And then sometimes you get into a little bit of a back and forth.
Oh, interesting.
The big issues for our police department, this has not been mentioned pretty much ever. I think where most of the drug arrests or the drug contacts, we don't get that many actual drug arrests because of the way the law has been, but most of the drug contacts are occurring out there on the streets where they're contacting people who are either fleeing a recent shoplift or something like that, criminal trespass, squatters in houses will have drugs on their person. Every once in a while, drugs in cars, that kind of thing, but a lot of times those are also found in pockets and things like that, incident to arrest. I'm not sure I remember seeing any cases, and police do enter houses sometimes for things like a domestic violence call, and some of those involve drugs and alcohol. But I don't remember any where that was, you know, the condition of the person is brought up, but not the actual presence of the drugs.
Agreed, well, if it was my magic wand to save the world, I'd make it a felony offense for kids to contact controlled substances other than cannabis from their parents leaving it recklessly aside, causing that child harm, but.
Yeah, that may be where it ends up, that may be what they're trying to do now, I just don't know. But I know that we don't have the authority to make it a felony, and the person who does have that authority has asked us to adopt this.
I get it, yeah. Very good, well, thank you for that. Okay, those items tentatively scheduled for the December second meeting are there on our agenda sheet for tonight. Looks like we have a few issues, including the swearing in ceremony for our new municipal court judge, report from the Culver Park School District, and then some agreements that are being brought forward for approval on the consent agenda. And then the adoption of the Shoreline Master Program amendments that we reviewed tonight, and the ordinance we just looked at. So, reports by the city manager, Mr. Coughfield.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Um, a few updates for you. Uh, last week, our Planning and Public Works Department created a current projects map, uh, which we posted on our website. And um, it's basically all the projects that have a valuation that are greater than or equal a hundred thousand dollars, we can't really just put everything out there as.
On the website.
And uh, so we're going to update that on a quarterly basis, and again, just to let the community know what's going on in terms of development in, 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 in the city. Um, secondly, um, we learned last week that the city has been awarded not one, not two, but three Transportation Improvement Board grants. Um, we were hoping just to get one. Um, however, the um, you know, the expertise of our um, capital projects team resulted in us getting three grants in support of Nianza Road Project, Interlock in between One Twelfth and Washington, as well as the One Twelfth and Idaho Wild Road Project for a total of two point four million across those, those three projects. So, um, this is going to provide us some financial flexibility, particularly as it relates to um, the issuance of transportation um, benefit district bonds, and so we'll know more before the end of the year on that, as well as hopefully positively protecting and preserving funding from our general fund and/or real estate excise tax fund, just given the kind of the economic circumstances that we're dealing with. So this is, this will be a huge boon to be able to help us there.
This allows us to pull back some money in case we have overruns in some other projects.
That's what we're, that's exactly what we're looking at, Mayor, so we should know by the end of the year on where we sit on that. Um, also, uh, some additional good, good news to report is that the city, uh, you as the council, is now the owner of the property located at ninety-three twenty to ninety-three thirty Bridgeport Way West, uh, which is adjacent to the Colonial Plaza. It's the building that used to hold, among other things, the bagel shop. On Friday, a Pierce County Superior Court Judge ruled for the city as part of our condemnation process that the city is not only the owner of the project, but also set the cost in terms of what we are to pay for the project based on the most recent appraisal, which is one point four, one four million dollars. As a matter of fact, the city clerk just processed that check request earlier this afternoon. So we'll be moving forward with that. Uh, the next steps are for us to move forward with abatement of the building, rip up all the asphalt, and basically create kind of a um, open, open space out there, given that the purpose of acquiring this property is for a future downtown project in some shape, downtown park in some shape, form, or, or, or manner. So um, some, again, some very good news there, and I'd just also like to point out that the judge did make the ruling based on a default, since the um, the, the current, the previous property owner was, was not engaged in the process.
Just a quick question for you on that, as I looked at the, the parcel, you know, historically, it's got that entrance off of Motor Avenue, it goes into that, technically, that's now part of our parcel.
No, that's part of the parcel.
So we could and would block that out.
We're gonna, we're gonna fence off the city's property.
Yep, okay.
Um, the, the last item I'd like to bring up to the council before I get into just real quickly your, your, your schedule is your Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board. So I just wanted to keep you appraised that we have been having zero luck in recruiting people to serve on that board. You're currently down to four members. Uh, one of the members, his term, who's the chair, his term actually expires at the end of this year. He, he has not applied for reappointment, leaving three members whose term expire at the end of, I think, twenty twenties, at the end of um, the end.
Twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six, I believe. Yes, at the end of twenty twenty-six. But the board size is supposed to be up to nine people. I don't think, certainly since I've been the city manager, we've had more than, more than five, and certainly having three members, I don't know how productive that is, is in terms of how comfortable the council feels with, you know, a board of that size. So a couple of things to think of is, um, I mean, we can continue to recruit for it, but again, we just have had just no luck whatsoever. Um, so a couple of options, or several options. One is to meld the duties and responsibilities of L-HAB into your P-RAB board. Um, another would be the Planning Commission. Another would be, Councilmember Brandstetter mentioned this, would be, maybe you take on some of those responsibilities. And then another would be perhaps um, to ask the Lakewood Historical Society to take on some responsibilities there. But again, this is just being generated by the fact that you're supposed to have a board of up to nine members of the community, or supposed to be actively engaged on, you know, a fairly comprehensive, um, you know, work, work program, and really not too much is getting done. Um, you know, this year, um, with the size of their, with their board, they've only had one meeting. Uh, ten meetings so far have been canceled due to a lack of a quorum. So um, so it's a little frustrating across the board. And I know the folks that are currently on the board are, really want to get something done and do some good work, but at the same time, you know, there's just not, nothing happening. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention, Mayor and Council, and if you want to give us some direction on what to do there, we'll be more than happy to um, um, you know, to follow that for you.
Is this the moment we can just chat for a second about it?
If I could maybe just finish my report. Um, and then, uh, lastly, just as it relates to your calendar, uh, next Wednesday, we're having our annual employee recognition event over at the Technical College Rotunda. You should be on your calendar, that's at eight AM. Um, later on that afternoon, I know myself, Deputy Mayor and Councilmember Brandstetter are going to be attending AWC's District Six meeting to get an update on legislative issues um, as we head into the twenty twenty-five legislative session out in Ording. Um, next Thursday is the fifteenth annual Fallen Officer Food Drive to benefit EFN, as well as an opportunity to, to um, participate in the blood drive. Though if you wish to participate in the blood drive, you need to sign up ASAP. Those, those, those slots fill very, very quickly. Um, and then a week from Saturday is our annual holiday parade and Christmas tree lighting. And then, uh, two weeks from Friday is um, our um, dinner event over at Thornwood Castle with the Two-Two Striker Brigade.
Yep.
And then uh, that, that following Saturday is the Jingle Bell Run at Forest Silicon Park. So again, just wanted to, wanted to point that out for you. So with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. Before we go to the discussion on L-HAB, any other questions on the city manager's report? Mr. Brandstetter?
Uh, only my comment is that the, the interactive map on ongoing projects, uh, you know, as a dashboard um, is uh very useful and, 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 and a uh, uh, I, I think it's going to be useful, not just, but, but it's going to be useful to the public because it answers a lot of questions about people see something going on at some location, and there's a dot there on that map, you can go and it can tell you when the permit was, what it is, a, a brief, a brief explanation of the scope. So it's a uh, I think it's going to be a really good tool for transparency, communication with the public, and of uh, of, of keeping, keeping, keeping track of things, because I, I did note that some projects have long timelines. There were some twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two permits in there that are still on there as ongoing projects, and are in fact ongoing projects based on what you can see on, on, on the ground, to be able to go that, but that uh, the staff that put that together and, and will be maintaining it um, is, are, to be commended.
Does the interactive map actually have the ability to pull up the uh, the designs for the project, or just the location?
No, Mayor, just basic, who?
Okay.
Just, just basic information, location, main, things, things along those lines.
Good.
Okay, so, Mayor, may I add something? So as it relates to the acquisition of the property, we were not expecting that to occur in two thousand twenty-five. Um, I may have to come back to you before the end of the year for a budget adjustment to appropriate the Economic Development Opportunity Funds, which you've designated for that, but it hasn't been appropriated as a, as an expenditure. Um, it's still sitting in the fund balance, so.
So the Economic Development Fund, or some of the ARPA funds, I thought were for that too?
So I think we're going to be, we're, we're getting close to, we're going to be meeting tomorrow and Wednesday to iron that out, but I don't think there's enough ARPA funds based on what we've incurred so far relating to Edgewater and some other things to do that, so.
Okay.
So, and then plus, those monies, the council's policy direction is those monies being made available for the downtown park, so, um, you know, but it's one point four million, so.
Right.
Um, it's, it's, it's a big chunk.
Keep me in the loop.
Say again.
So let me know after your meeting.
Roger that, yeah, yeah, so we'll know um, in the next day or so.
Okay. Very good, any other questions? So while we have him here, let's talk about L-HAB briefly. Seems like those functions might roll up nicely in the P-RAB Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Mr. Brandstetter?
I'm reluctant to do that. Um, that uh, we've already filled the Parks and Rec's plates with capital projects and plans and, 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 and things and, 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 and and the update of the legacy plan and things to do that. When I look at the, at the L-HAB, it's, it's kind of like a small dish of fruit salad. And you know, the, 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 the three or four things they're really supposed to do. Okay, and, and, and in other words, help homeowners get their property, or, or property owners get their properties designated with a historical designation for some reason. Something that what happens extremely infrequently is, is, is a thing that if someone was interested in doing that, that we as a council could take action on, since we would have to anyway, and it's a question of having them do an application, having staff just package it for us and us deciding what to do, it's kind of a, of a nothing, it's like the final approval of a plat almost, like to be able to go and do that. Uh, that we asked them to take, taken some stewardship of the Heritage Tree Program, but the truth is, because of their lack of meeting in that, and quite honestly, on, on, on some members, a lack of enthusiasm because they didn't particularly see trees as historical landmarks. Uh, but, but that can, we're in a year of where we're going to be rolling out uh, you know, an urban forestry program, and it can be, some procedures regarding that can be written into that, and it can be, be done, but it doesn't have things to go on. And um, that in terms of keeping an, an awareness of the history of, of, of the area and of Lakewood, to be honest, we've been doing a reasonably good job of that outside of the activities of the L-HAB. We have ongoing discussions and relationships with the Historic or Silicon Association that we have independently have worked with the Nisqually Tribe and the combination of the Arts Commission and the P-RAB about doing things that will do that. We have uh, the restoration of the age born is, is, is in that, but it's, the, the L-HAB really is not the yeah, uh, you, you, you know, you know, a, a, an, an, an element in, in that um, that uh, you know, a, a property that has some historical signatures, Lake Wald Gardens, but we have a relationship with them as that, that nonprofit entity. So I think that the, working with the family of nonprofit entities in the community that share that interest, along with the, there is uh, there are the, the, the two community colleges that have an interest in that. We can do that on a we don't need a board to put together to coordinate going to do that. Uh, I, I, I think we can, we can, we can, we can sunset the, this board while still keeping our focus on the history and that of, of, of the community uh, to be able to go and do that. And likewise, I'm, I'm, I'd be reluctant to, to add something else on to the Planning Commission uh, that, that, that uh, I am uh, I am concerned about how much we've, we've asked them to do, and, 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 and along with that concern about how much level of detail they can really get into on the things we've asked them to do, to be able to go and do that. So, 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 so my, my role would be to send it, to pull some of the pieces out, decide if, if, if they, if they need to actually be put someplace, or that they, if they, they can just naturally happen, but keep our focus, okay, of saying that we're, we're, we're looking for partnerships to help with the historical and, 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 and heritage awareness of the community to be able to go and do that, which is akin to our trying to work with all of our diverse neighborhoods and, 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 and diverse uh, population to do that. So um, I don't think we'd be, we'd be be missing anything other than and maybe one thing we should get done is that, that, then, 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 without that board and their insistence that they want to have two Bridgeport Way signs on every post.
That sounds like you're in favor of sunsetting the board. Uh, that would, that would make two of us, anyone else? Deputy Mayor, and then Mr. Boki. Do you have a comment?
I was just saying that I would be in favor of sunset.
Okay, great, Mr. Boki.
So I'll speak to where it might go. I don't think Planning Commission is the proper place, they're just not geared to that. The, the focus of the commission, just, and we've already put transportation in their wheelhouse. Parks seems to make the most sense, but you know, they, but I don't know much about their overall schedule. Um, they've got a lot to do, but I, but I do think that it really consists of coming up with, I don't, I don't know, I think it's kind of reimagining the whole thing. I will say, just to remind everybody, we tried this once before.
The sunsetting?
She wasn't, I think most, at least four of us were, and violent opposition from really one person, and.
Mr. Spieth?
Nope. And it turned the whole thing around, we just gave up, we just said, you know, okay, whatever. And um, and we've given the board another ten years, and here we are, right? And they seem to be a little bit in all right. So I, you know, I, I'm always. So I, you know, I I'm always open to trying to figure out new ways to do things better. And I'll leave it at that. But yes, I'm in favor of it.
Ms. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I am in favor of sunsetting it, but I would like to see the partnership with our Historical Society. That just seems like, I know that it's not a board of the city, but that kind of flows into a little bit of what Councilmember Branstad was talking about of leveraging the community pieces that are already out there. It just seems like a natural fit. I don't know what it would be. Like, Mayor, you talked about it, stuff that we need to figure out, but that to me seems like a great place for that to kind of go. But I am in favor of sunsetting.
Good. You have consensus. Mr. Lorsella?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm I'm in agreement with the rest of councils in terms of sunsetting it, but I do think we need to identify what sort of gap that leaves us with and how that is best filled, whether it's through the Historical Society or a subcommittee of P RAB. Without putting a ton of work on them, it doesn't appear that it's a ton of work right now. Being that we've only had one meeting this year and I'm not hearing an outcry from the community that they need more support. So I'm in favor of sunsetting and revisiting what the right approach is.
Well, the it sounds like you have consensus to sunset. It's a matter of logistics. The Lakewood Historical Society is an LTAC recipient. And as such, they could, as part of their annual proposal, talk about whatever gestation of ideas that bubble up through their membership and their ranks and their observation, the community, that they could promote ideas to City Council for further consideration, I assume. Yes.
So we'll move forward with an ordinance to sunset this Elhab and perhaps the first or second meeting in January would be, we should, we should be ready for something like that. As it relates to the Historical Society, might I recommend that, you know, we can go have a conversation with them and maybe schedule a joint meeting with their leadership and with you folks sometime and depending on the calendar, you know, sometime in first quarter, if that would, if that would work.
It might energize them a bit more because then they have something else to work on that's of significance for the city.
Right. And and this could also energize the current members of Elhab to maybe
Be part of the Historical Society.
Yeah, that's good. That's great. Because they are volunteers and it'd be nice to find a place for them.
Absolutely. Mr. Boki?
I will say, because I see the requests that the county gets when they come up from their historical, when they give out the money, that's how we got the signs, that's how we got the rocks. Most of those are not from the cities. They're they're not from city organizations. They're almost all Historical Societies. Still comes in there almost every year. So Silicon Historical Society, Gig Harbor. There's the Gig Harbor Maritime Museum. We've been given, the county's been giving money to build this, rebuild this fishing vessel for, I don't know, a couple decades now. I don't know. It's a good, good work if you can get it, I guess, but almost all those come, I I don't know, in fact, some come from like Pacific Lutheran for document preservation or now they're actually even getting into private parties to have their houses fixed. That's just a whole nother thing, but but most of the time it has been Historical Societies that have made these requests. In Lakewood's case, it's always been the city through that committee or the committee through the city. It's almost always Historical Societies in groups. So I I would say that, that that part might actually, you know, with a new set of eyes on it, Lakewood Historical Society may say, hey, we want to get involved in this and really come up with some new ideas for grants and raise money against those grants too, right? Which they have that ability to do, which this committee can't do. So you know, if they come up with an idea about this is some historical preservation kind of thing, they could, they could do that in conjunction and then try to raise money against that. I and I have no idea what they would come up with, but it runs the gamut. It's interesting every year who gets funded. It really runs the gamut. And and Lakewood's have been good. It's just that it's really just been two things all these years.
Well, it does give the Historical Society some additional oomph in their LTAC applications because if they come up with something that might attract tourism or some new thing of historical significance that we may not have thought of yet, you know, it's something that might be worthy of their application.
So I I would concur with you, Mayor. I think that's a, that's a good point, more so than actually with the city overseeing it.
Yep, absolutely. Great. Anything else? Otherwise, we'll turn to council comments. We'll start with Mr. Branstad.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I I I have to say that I'm finding a lot of enthusiasm in the community for the parade. That it's I think, I think people are looking forward to it in anticipation of better weather than last year. And 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 I'm and I I I I'm certainly looking forward to it. And and I am looking forward to the the more in-person event type of model in January for our Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration and getting back to to being able to go and do that and combining it with a walk and in the park, I think is going to be you you know, a a really, a really positive thing. So I think we're winding the year down with both a list of events and of an acknowledgement of our accomplishments. That's, that's, you know, a pretty positive a positive note and yeah, set the stage for if we do in fact cancel those two meetings in December of you know, you know, re-energizing and for the for the new year. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to rethink our youth council again for their great presentation. Total professionalism. They were very prepared. I love that they answered all of our questions and they had a lot of suggestions. So I just really appreciate that from them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lorsella?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not much for me tonight. I'll just echo what Councilmember Bell said. It was great to see our youth council thinking quick on their feet as they were asked questions that they may not have anticipated. So shout out to them for doing a great job.
Councilmember Boki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to compliment Ms. Tiffany Spear, who contacted me in my day job and about some ARPA monies that the county has. And I'll try to explain this without confusing everybody. The county in their ARPA money set aside five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think, in the ARPA monies for eviction assistance, essentially Tacoma Pro Bono. We did a a certain amount here that I can't remember off the top of my head.
Six figures?
In in the county's budget, they set aside the five fifty, but they excluded the cities of Lakewood and Tacoma. For for reasons because they felt Lakewood and Tacoma each had their own monies. Lakewood has been very efficient in using those monies and we've used most of them and Ms. Spear asked for the council, went to Councilmember Hitchen and said, can we get that taken out of the budget so Lakewood would be eligible for the funds? And and Councilmember Hitchen went, talked to Tacoma to actually Tacoma Pro Bono, the person at Tacoma Pro Bono wrote a very nice email really explaining the situation, really soup to nuts, really just this, here's our situation, here's our situation with Tacoma, here's our situation with Lakewood. The county really has barely started their program. It's, I think there's been, you know, the person who works for me actually did research on it and came back and said, well, they've only billed for two months so far. So there's money available. And so Councilmember Hitchen put made a budget amendment the other day and it's going to be heard a final tomorrow. So we'll know tomorrow night whether those Lakewood is now eligible for funds for those ARPA funds. So it'll be helpful. There is a limitation on it because there was some concern that you know, the rest of the county needed to be able to get it. So Tacoma and Lakewood are 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 sharing a little over, almost a third of the, you know, a little over a quarter maybe of the remaining funds, let's say, or less than a quarter of the remaining funds, but at least it's something that will allow the program to continue on because I think our funds were going to run out probably early next year is what I think the person from Tacoma Pro Bono had had told the county council. So congratulations for Ms. Spear for for seeing that, asking for that change, explaining why that would need to be done. Giving the the council, the county council, the information they needed to make a decision. And so we're, you you know, hopefully tomorrow night we'll know when we'll be eligible for those funds.
Very good. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Moss?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I just want to compliment the youth council as well. I I'm so impressed with the their ability to speak to us so comfortably. That's great. As Vice President for the State Apples Association, I had the opportunity on Wednesday to do the Operation Turkey Drop on McCord, where we go and we deliver turkeys to airmen at the different squadrons. And it was a lot of fun. Really? Yeah, we threw them out there. No. We 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 had a a a line where we passed them down from one to the other into the building. So that was a lot of fun. Other than that, I just want to say Happy Thanksgiving to each and every one of you and look forward to seeing you next Monday. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, kudos to the youth council. I I certainly would like to take them up on the invitation for us to get together, maybe sometime in January, February, maybe have a combo evening where we do a little pizza dinner or something out here and give them a chance to formally sit around tables and talk to us, kind of a rotating round robin table thing about our career path or education path or whatever might be of interest to them. And then also maybe have an exercise where we we do talk about what they'd like to see in a multi-generational community facility because I think that's important to talk about. So that would be good if we could do something like that in January, February. Speaking of all things of getting together with village type opportunities, Good Neighbor Village was one such opportunity this last week. It was actually quite good. It was the ribbon cutting groundbreaking out in Spanaway for the twenty acre Good Neighbor Village, funded predominantly by Pierce County, but as we know, we invested a million dollars in the project for the benefit of homeless veterans. So the project is moving forward and it certainly continues to have its folks that are anxious about it and appreciate that. There were plenty of them lining the route as we went into the event that day and plenty of them sort of blocking our path, leaving the event that later afternoon. So it's unfortunate. But people have the right to express their opinions and hopefully the project will prove to be a a worthy project and it will come to fruition with all of the support services and the true Good Neighbor attributes that we hope that it has and and it has in the surrounding community. So I hope that works. Then Mr. Boki and I were at PCRC, Pierce County Regional Council Thursday, where I was there. There weren't many action items other than to appoint folks to the various, you know, regional boards. The Puget Sound Regional Council has the different executive boards and Transportation Policy Board. So I volunteered to be on the the executive committee as an either an alternate or a primary, I forget which, but since I can zoom in, I will do that as appropriate and I'll report back on all things Puget Sound Regional Council for you. And then just wanted to reiterate lots of great events coming up. I I hope that the parade goes well without a hitch with good weather. I know most of us will be there. It would be nice. I don't know if we had any signage on the the truck that we were all in the last time, but it would be kind of nice to at least have a little signage on there. So if people want to shout at us, they can at least know who to shout at. That would be great. And then I don't know, I was going to throw this out there for the good old hole, but you know, we talked a lot about the multi-generational sort of community facility, whatever you want to call it, is a major council priority. And I know we don't have any funding identified, but there are potential properties out there that we have not yet identified that may exist. It might be worthy of a mini retreat, maybe February-ish, just to have a conversation among ourselves about what we think the community might look like. And I know that might inform the manager on on some options. It's likely going to be one of those things that we may have to think about going to the voters for to really get it funded if we're going to do something sooner than later because there isn't a lot of extra juice and the squeeze in our city budget. So it's it's something if you want to think about, early spring might be a challenge to just sit down and have a focused conversation about it amongst ourselves. We don't have to have a ton of staff prep for it or whatever, but we can just have some some noodling of ideas and get a sense where that might take us. It it may be not worthy of the time, but I think it might be. I don't know what your thoughts are.
I think that's something that I think that's something that most of our residents are interested in, and so we may can put something together that would pique their interest. I think it would be a good idea for the community.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I would certainly like to around whatever options that we see or want to discuss amongst ourselves, doing that in January and February, given that that's one of the significant tenants in our biennial goals.
Right.
That, you know, starting early to talk about it so that we can then begin to actually target strategies or that or eliminate strategies is I I I think is definitely a first quarter twenty twenty five activity we should take.
Well, as I think I mentioned last time, and I'll I'll reiterate it, I have been approached by you know, one of the local churches, Little Church on the Prairie, with the invitation to have a conversation about some reutilization of land that they may have after they finish their sort of planning process, but they wanted to at least offer the opportunity for us to engage in that to see if that might be something of interest to us. And if not, they'll go on their merry way and do something else. But it's an opportunity that I don't think we want to give up on without some serious consideration. Lorsella?
I I would be in favor of having a retreat focused specifically on that. We want to make sure we have the opportunity to hear the voice of folks like our youth council, maybe having one or two members from that there to sort of speak on their behalf or other small sections of our community that that we value their initial input on from the beginning before we get too far down the road, just to make sure we're we're listening.
Absolutely. It's big thirty thousand foot level stuff at this point, right? Okay, very good. Well, I will work with Mr. Cophield and see if we can carve out something in a timeframe that that makes sense in the first quarter. Very good. Well, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, thank you for your rapt attention tonight. We're adjourned.